...our city a better place. Lord, we know that there are those in our community this evening who are ill and infirm, widowed and orphaned, those who are in need. We just pray that your blessing would be with them and that you would cause us to help where we can. We pray especially for our City Commission this evening, Lord, that you would be with them and that the work that they would do would be pleasing unto you. As we leave here this evening, go with us, guide us, keep us safe from harm, and we'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Please join the flags, Lord. Attention, position, play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Item one, would consider a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw. Second. Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero, and I declare this meeting now in recess.
I just can't be in the airport authority soon.
Oh, we're going to the airport authority?
Through the minutes in all three.
Aha. Declare the meeting of the Shawnee Airport Authority open. Item one, would consider approval of the minutes of the June 18th, 2018, regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. And we are now moving to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Again, item one.
Mayor, you do need officially recessed the airport authority.
Oh.
Thank you, sir.
Airport authority is recessed. So y'all don't need me at all. Consider approval of the minutes, June 18th, 2018, meeting of Shawnee Municipal Authority. Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries. We are recessed to back to the City Commission. Item two, reconsider, consider resolution of appreciation for Dubb Bouchon, Commissioner Ward One of the City of Shawnee.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Seconded.
Second by Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Dubb Bouchon as Commissioner of Ward One of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Dubb Bouchon.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Call a question.
Do I vote?
It doesn't matter. Motion carries seven zero. Item three, consider resolution of appreciation to Lisa Shaw, Commissioner Ward Five of the City of Shawnee.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Lisa Shaw as Commissioner of Ward Five of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Lisa Shaw.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six yea and one abstention. Somehow I knew you were abstention. Do you have the flag? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Lisa gonna make you halfway.
Item five, swearing in of Ward One Commissioner Ed Bolt.
We'll put you on this side, then we'll put you on that side with the camera. All right, if you'll raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Ed Bolt. You solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Need money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance and non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation permitted by law.
Other than the compensation permitted by law.
I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I further swear I shall faithfully discharge my duties.
As Commissioner.
As Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'll raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Mark Sehorn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, defend, and obey.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as Commissioner.
I will.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as Commissioner.
My duties as Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Right, if you'll raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ben Salter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Money or any valuable things.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As Commissioner.
As Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
You're official now.
Yep.
Before we recess, I just want to make a comment about the outgoing Commissioners. Lisa was here before I was and provided lots and lots of guidance and insight, and I've had the opportunity to work with her on several committees behind the scenes that you all haven't seen. And she was always prepared, always articulate, and the city is better off for having had her here through the years that she's been here. My personal appreciation. Dubb, I know your time was short, but you came in at a point where we were trying to put some turmoil behind us, and you've helped us do that. And again, I think the city is better off for your having been here. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any of the other Commissioners would like to comment?
Well, I'm still pouring coffee for him ever, you know, I have it here, so I guess we've been, got pretty good friends in that town, I guess. And I appreciate it, and I just shared that with him just a moment ago. Especially say thank you very much for being a friend and being here for me. It's really been my time much more enjoyable for you.
As I told you, this has been my pleasure and honor to work with this group of city employees and Commissioners and for the City of Shawnee. So I appreciate your support, and thank you for that. And the incoming Commissioner at this chair is going to be more than capable. He is very knowledgeable and quite active and will be very well represented. So that's it.
Lisa, would you like to comment?
Actually, when I get into these kind of situations, I like to be prepared.
See, she has notes. She always has notes. It's, you know, I treat her like I did my wife when I was married. I used to tell her, you know, I'm trying to let you win if you just shut up.
Well, you know, recently I've been going to law school, and they say, you know, stay within a certain number of words when you're writing a particular document. And so on this document, it is less than 250 words, so let me assure you of that. I would like to say that as I leave my role here as Ward Five City Commissioner, I would like to first thank God for giving me the strength to meet the challenges that I faced during my term of office. Also, I sincerely appreciate the constituents within the City of Shawnee, my Choctaw people and the local tribes for this court given to me during my term of office. And I most assuredly want to thank my family, friends and neighbors and city employees for your input, patience and support. On a note to remember, on August 28th, 1963, Martin Luther King gave his "I Have a Dream" speech. Decades later, I am still riveted by that haunting message of hope, love and vision. I too have a dream, yet of a different kind. My vision is that the City of Shawnee will unify and partner with all the minorities and keep in mind that tribes are a sovereign nation and that they have unique responsibilities that's given to them through the federal government. I have a dream, and that dream is that Shawnee is united. Thank you.
We're going to recess briefly while we do a little housekeeping up here. Item seven, commission appointment of a vice mayor per Article Three, Section City of the City, Section Six of the City Charter. Is there any discussion? The Chair moves to nominate Commissioner Harrod as Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six aye, one abstention.
Thank you. Because she realized he's only missed one meeting in a year or so.
There's some more coming.
Yeah.
Item eight, consider approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item D.
Commissioner Rutherford would like item D pulled. Anybody else want anything pulled? Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda absent item D.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Two second. Commissioner Salter. Call a question. Motion carries. Item D, we pulled to confirm and approve the City Manager's hiring of Lisa Leon, the certified municipal clerk, as a city clerk. And we just felt like she needed a little recognition. Phyllis has kind of been pulling back, and Lisa has stepped up for quite a while, and just wanted to stand and introduce you to this group. She's really the one that runs the show, so.
How you get you on name tag?
Now you're red-faced. You'll have to get used to it. Item nine, citizens' participation. What did I do?
We're going to vote on D.
Oh. Well, she's not leaving anyway, so. Call a question on D.
What's our motion?
I don't think there's any.
There's a motion to.
I'm moved to approve.
Wasn't it?
Second. D second.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, taken by Commissioner Harrod. Now call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Now, citizens' participation. We have, I would remind you that we have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per topic limit. If you'd like to speak to the Commission or the public, approach the podium, tell who you are, sign in and speak your piece.
I like that you look right at me. It makes me really happy. Well, congratulations, new Commissioners. Welcome to the City Council. My name is Holly Gordon, and I am with Gateway to Prevention and Recovery here in Shawnee. And I would like to make a personal invitation to each of you tomorrow morning at 7:30. Gateway is becoming the Blues, next Blue Zones Work Site Approved entity. We will be having a ribbon cutting at 7:30. It's in the morning, I know. That's when our board meeting is, and it just seemed like a good idea to include our Board of Directors that have really been working very stringently with staff and employees to meet and exceed the work site checklist, the wellness checklist. It's been an interesting journey so far, and that's really it. So congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thanks, Holly. Anyone else?
I am Taylor Shakarabee with the Blue Zones Project, and at the last city planning meeting, I actually presented a small presentation. We've been working with other community groups. We've formed a small subcommittee of the Blue Zones Project that is the Safe Routes to School Committee. And so we've been working on doing audits around our area school sites and sending surveys home and doing them in the classrooms to find out if kids are walking to school, and if not, why not, and how can we make it easier and safer for them to do that. So I just wanted to pass on to you that we've been doing all of this background research, and we've started looking for grant funding, both from ODOT, which will hopefully open, and also from other community sources. So I just wanted that to be on your radar, that that would be coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Are you all going to come up here? Okay.
Maybe.
We're just going to dress the same and look at the same, so if you get all kinds.
I didn't get the memo.
My name is Miriam Bell. I'm with the Blue Zones Project as well. And I'm just really here to make an introduction of Brian and Dennis here, these gentlemen that are going to come up and tell you some really exciting news on behalf of Homeland. They're from the corporate office in Oklahoma City, and they're going to share some participation information in the Blue Zones Project and what they're doing that's really cool in their
This is a big deal.
It really is.
Hi. Good evening. Congratulations.
Thank you.
To the new Commissioners, and thank you for having us here tonight. Dennis and I are just here to talk a little bit about our commitment to the Blue Zone and to the City of Shawnee, and we're honored and excited to participate in the project. Our store, we call it our Store 198, will be part of the Smoke Free Zone. So we've actually already stopped selling cigarettes and look forward to working with you on this journey of the Blue Zone. We'll have both of our stores actually participate in the Blue Zone Project to be the food, to be one of the food providers. So we just wanted to let you know Homeland's commitment to the program and that we're excited and honored that you guys want us to be a part of that.
I would just say, while we've always offered healthy solutions and healthy alternatives, we're now doing more of our part to push people and to educate them on healthier choices and make those a little more readily available for them. So we're very excited for the support that we receive from the Blue Zone, from the City of Shawnee, and we're very excited to be a part of it.
I know you guys really climbed out there to get this done, and we appreciate it as a community, and I know the Blue Zones people appreciate it as well. Thank you very much. Anyone else? You don't have on a blue shirt.
My name's Daniel Shaughnessy, and I'm simply a community advocate, owner of Shawnee CTV. And I'm really excited of something that I hope is on your agenda tonight, which is the parklet policy that is coming before you. Just for consideration, as a resident and someone who spends a lot of time downtown, it would be very nice to have something like the parklets as described. There's a lot of different ways in which they can be handled, I know, and I leave that to you guys and your knowledge of the citizenry and the business and also the needs of Shawnee. But as a resident, I'm very excited about parklets and the opportunity that they present for more citizens to come downtown and enjoy the space. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Anyone else? Thank you. Item ten, presentation by the City Manager to Employee of the Month, Craig Mincher.
Mr. Mincher. Thank you, sir, for joining us this evening. Craig began working in the Parks Department for the City of Shawnee in May of 2013. He's responsible for making sure the park, restrooms and grounds are clean and ready for the public. On July 1st this year, Craig was running his regular route to clean and empty trash containers at the Shawnee Twin Lakes when a storm came up and was nearly on the lake. Craig noticed two individuals trying to get their boat off of the water. And as he pulled up to make sure that they were going to be okay, one individual was backing the trailer into the water, the other person noticed that the boat had come untied and was floating away from the dock. Craig watched as the person ran and dove into the water trying to retrieve the boat. Before long, Craig witnessed the person going under and having trouble in the water. Craig emptied his pockets and ran to help. He made it to the boat and held on while still searching for the missing person. He tried to feel for the person under the water, but he could not find him. As Craig exited the water, the other individual asked him to dial 911 since his phone was not charged. Well, we are immensely saddened by the loss of life that day. We're very thankful for Craig and the selfless steps he took to step in and help wherever he could. And so for these reasons and others, it's my honor to congratulate you as Employee of the Month.
Item 11, consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment from defined benefit plan for Cody Presley. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Rutherford, two second. Then Mr. Commissioner Salter. Is there any further discussion? Call a question.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
Ben. Motion carries seven zero. Item 12, consider resolution approving renewal of certain lease agreement with Motorola Credit Corporation.
Mr. Mayor, I request that you defer this item until August 6th. Will we just review some terms of the agreement in a little greater detail?
There a motion to defer?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, second by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero, six zero, seven zero, however many there are, to August 6th. Item 13, consider resolution to adopt a downtown parklet policy.
Thank you, Commissioners. The resolution that we have here in front of us today is for the adoption of a parklet policy for downtown Shawnee. For those that don't know what a parklet is, it's essentially taking two or three parking spaces, in our case, in the downtown, and converting those into a platform for extended pedestrian use. So these typically have plantings, benches, seats, tables, umbrellas, those sort of things, really to, again, just extend the public use out into the public right-of-way. This was initially brought up in the 2012 Downtown This was initially brought up in the 2012 downtown revitalization study for Shawnee, where this was incorporated as a stepping stone for potential progress in downtown. Later, after that, Blue Zones, at their Built Environment Summit, established a number of policies, eight to, eight to 10 policies, in fact, regarding land use. And this landed as, as one of the policies to proceed with. What I'd like to do is kind of cover four different criteria that coincide with the guidelines that we have, and then very shortly talk about the planning commission comments that we received. So, first and foremost, location would be within the C4 downtown business district specifically. This was selected mostly due to the fact that speed limits are under 25 miles per hour in these particular zones. Next category is administrative review. Applicants will be approved on a case-by-case basis, and that permit will be through the city manager's office, much like the special event permit that we have, that we have now. Parklets are established in the street ride of way and must remain open to the public, not an extension of private use. What that means to us is that it must remain open to the public. It's not for a particular restaurant or a particular business to host sales on that, on, on this particular platform. No alcohol in public places. Adjacent property owners must give consent to the applicant's request. Additionally, written notice will be provided 10 days prior to all property owners in that block. Liability, insurance coverage of $1 million, naming the city of Shawnee as additional insured and valid for the duration of the permit. Next would be the construction, and again, this is up to three parking spaces, really between two and three. Because we have, we have angled parking, it's a little more difficult to fit these particular contravents on there, but, but two to three spate, spaces is more than adequate. Access will be from the curbside only, so it has to be ADA accessible. These ramps or these, excuse me, these platforms have to be seamless against the sidewalk but not block the guttering underneath. But access will be blocked by really three-foot barriers along the outside, two feet from adjacent parking spaces, and at least two feet from the travel lanes. The last section I'll talk about is, again, use and maintenance, being that no sales are allowed in the parklet. Food and beverage can be brought into and consumed on the parklet, but as far as, as service, that will not, not happen on these, on these parklets. Permit holders will be responsible for daily cleaning, maintenance, and pest control. That really summarizes the, the guidelines that we set forth. We will have 30-day and 90-day permits that are allowed for this, so that really represents, from, again, 30 days to more of a seasonal, a seasonal approach to these parklets. The planning commission recommends approval on this policy, but they did want to bring up a couple of concerns that they did have. So, first, they were a little concerned about the advertising of parklets or the lack of advertising that's allowed in there, but again, per our, our city code, we can't have advertising, off-premise advertising in the public ride of way. Aside from that, it's just a bigger question asked, is this a benefit to the city? They want to be sure that this is something that will be used, used in the future if it brought forward as a, as a policy, especially due to the general cost of these, these parklets. They can range from eight to $15,000 or even, even higher than that. And it's for that reason I should explain that, that when these parklets come to different communities, I've researched about 15 to 20 different communities that brought these policies forward, they are either purchased, they're generally purchased by either a nonprofit organization or a foundation or a group, again, a group of restaurants that go in together on this, knowing full and well that, that advertising's not allowed on these sites, that people can bring their food and come outside, but really to the betterment of the community as a whole. It's an opportunity for people in the public to, to come, sit, rest, work, whatever they choose to do within the public, but it's just another opportunity that we, we can provide for our citizens in Shawnee. The city's really, especially since, since about 2010, put measures toward the commission for the betterment of downtown, including residential uses and, and increased use within the public ride of way for the businesses that we have currently. So, staff does recommend approval on this particular resolution, and it does hope that it is adopted, just for yet another opportunity for the public. At that, I'd be happy to answer any questions as you have.
Any questions?
Is there a particular schematics that will they present for that, as to what they're going to put up, and then that would be approved? Is that the idea?
That is correct.
And, and apparently the parking places would be, let's say, in front of a, obviously a store, would that also be with the approval of those store owners right there?
Correct.
All these things would have to be complementary to what their business would be. They'd have to be comfortable with it, right?
Yes, sir.
The idea is to increase social aspects of downtown, I'm sure.
Correct.
To try to create more interaction, right?
Great, and those are, those are very good points. The, and that's, in building this particular guideline, I borrowed from several communities, including Oklahoma City for the bulk of, bulk of the language. So, we are making sure we are protected as far as the proper notice to adjacent property owners who are using these spaces.
Because the type of parking we use has reduced the amount of spaces down there already, especially with the decorations and all, so that has to be one thing to put into consideration. I'm sure that has been talked about by the store owners, the people it would impact.
Absolutely.
And agreeable that that would be a plus that could override the necessity of having those particular spaces.
That's exactly right. And, and again, having it as a case-by-case basis allows us to, to make those determinations and give people the opportunity to communicate with the city manager or, or staff if there are any concerns about that particular permit.
What other communities that, that you're aware of have used this type of process?
Sure, so Oklahoma City, they really started with a, it's a parklet day that they essentially did once a year, but as of about 2016, they actually opened up their permit process for this. Most communities nationwide, this, at least the innovators of this particular policy, started around 2006 to 2010. So, we do have some case studies that show the benefits and, and the challenges that have, that have come from these, these parklets. But Oklahoma City's the closest to us and the most relevant as far as its use. So, again, I made, I made calls to the permitting office to, to double-check most of the language we have in here, but...
Well, I'm aware, of course, that the social aspects of downtown is something we've talked about for some time, and the sustainability of, of what's, what we built down there is very important. This would just be another step along that road to create that, then, wouldn't it?
Absolutely.
So, what are you talking about on the cost of the permits? Is it by parking places? Have they just taken one parking place or two parking places?
Sure, so the price for the 30 and the 90-day are both $100, regardless of how many spaces that are used. The reason we built that in is for, again, a case-by-case basis when we want to consider the adjacent property owners and those that are surrounded. So, taking those comments in, in consideration, especially this early on, we will have the opportunity to adapt the policy moving forward, but this allows us to try something maybe on a, a three- or four-week basis rather than a full 90-day, 90-day process.
Is that it?
I believe we have a couple of people that, that will definitely want to speak on this too, by the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know the drill.
Rachel Milo, Blue Zones Project and a small business owner. Yes, I serve on the Built Environment Committee with Justin and about seven other people who have been researching this policy and the parklets policy. There are several case studies about both the businesses that these sit in front of and their adjacent businesses seeing up to 20% increase in traffic or profits as a result of the temporary parklet policy during that time. We know that there's a lot of concerns around people lingering in the park spaces, but actually what the parklets case studies have shown is that because this becomes such a social environment, that it actually deters that. And the research from the OU Reimagined Downtown Survey says that the parklets being in place actually increase the activity in a way that you actually see less vagrant activity or lingering or loitering. And so, businesses actually enjoy it quite a bit because it's just additional eyes. The other thing is that we are on the 400 East Main Block, and there are new business owners and new building owners on our block that are also very interested in this and would like to see this policy in place so that they can take advantage of it as well. The Blue Zones Project would look at partnerships pretty soon, and we know that other businesses on our street would as well. So, we appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Any questions of Rachel?
Thank you.
Lindsay, do you want to speak?
No.
Is there any further discussion among the board?
Well, as a, an owner of a building downtown on Main Street, I mean, personally, I would be very much in favor of this. Most of you know I've been very involved in trying to get downtown revitalized and getting some activity down there for quite a while. And I, and I think this would be a very positive step, and especially in, in the block that Rachel brought up, because that, that's where my building is. I, I know the owners down there. I know that's probably where you're going to see it first, because I think they'll jump out there and do that, and I, I just think it's a big plus for downtown.
Great. Any other comments?
If they only give them a 30 or 90-day term, we're not even going to do it, but after that...
It would move to another business, hopefully.
It can also be renewed one time, so you could actually have 180 days.
I would expect at some point it would become a little bit more of a permanent policy, but I think particularly on the front end, that's, it's done both ways in other cities and, and, but it gives us an idea in a, in a very short window that we can experiment with, kind of see what works and what doesn't, what, what the community accepts. Would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second, Commissioner Gillum, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution supporting the adoption of a downtown parklet policy, allowing a temporary conversion of three or less curbside parking spaces into a platform with pedestrian amenities, offering a place to stop, sit, and rest while in downtown Shawnee.
Thank you. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item 14. Consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Shawnee Motel Edition located at 4981 North Harrison Avenue, case number SO 718, applicant Joe Covey.
Thank you, commissioners. This next case here, the property's located on the northeast corner of Harrison and I-40, along Enterprise Court, just east of the, in fact, it's Motel 6 property there. The applicant came forward in May with a request to subdivide a 4.5 acre, give or take, property into two different lots. The planning commission's reviewed this twice. The item's been deferred twice to give the applicant time to make some corrections. We've heard nothing, unfortunately, from the applicant, so this time I'm going to request that the city commission deny the request for preliminary plat.
Are there any questions of Justin? Would entertain a motion.
I'm ready.
By Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Gillum.
Just to clarify, that's a motion to deny.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question, please.
Who made the second?
Gillum. Punch your button, Ben. Motion carries seven zero. Item 15. Public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 4325 North Kikapoo Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial District, case number PE 1018, and property located at 4331 North Kikapoo Avenue from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District, case number PE 1118, and property located at 4337 North Kikapoo Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial District, case number PE 1218, applicant Nelman Brawning.
Thank you. The subject site is located on Kikapoo Street, just south of 45th, even more generally, right across, really, from the O'Reilly's, O'Reilly Store. The request we have today is to take what was three lots that have been deeded together as one property, hence the three addresses, currently under one D, converting those from residential use into commercial, into commercial use. We have three structures that exist on site, one to be removed by city order within, really, six months of approval of this particular rezone, but really no nonconformances found on this, on this site. It's consistent with our comprehensive plan, our zoning code, and, and rezones that we have done in the past in this particular corridor. So, with that, staff recommends approval with one condition, and that is the removal of the southernmost structure within six months.
Thank you. Any questions of Justin? Declare the public hearing open. If there is anyone who here would like to speak in favor of the proposal, come to the podium. Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Public hearing is hereby closed. Is there any further discussion? Would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Bolt?
Second.
By Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following-described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit. Attractive land described as beginning 690 feet south of the northwest corner of Lot 4 of Section 6, Township 10 North, Range 4 East of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Thence east 420 feet, thence north 78 feet, thence west 428, 420 feet, then south 78 feet to the point of beginning, and beginning at a point 467 feet south of the northwest corner of Lot 4 of Section 6, Township 10 North, Range 4 East of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Thence east 420 feet, thence south 70 feet, thence west 420 feet, thence north 70 feet to the point of beginning, and attractive land lying in Lot 4, beginning otherwise described as the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter of Section 6, Township 10 North, Range 4 East of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, described as beginning at a point 612 feet south of the northwest corner of said Lot 4, thence east 420 feet, thence north 75 feet, thence west 420 feet, thence south 75 feet to the point of beginning, from zoning classifications R1 Single Family Residential District and C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item 16. Consideration of approval of the final plat for First United Bank of Shawnee located at 2600 North Harrison Avenue, case number SO 918, applicant Hewitt Zollers, Inc.
All right, thank you again. The, the next case, property located at McArthur and Harrison, Southeast Corner, formerly the Joe Cooper Ford Structure. Since then, the property, the structure itself's been removed, the asphalt's been removed, and this is all in preparation for the First United Bank facility. The preliminary plat for this particular site was approved by the commission in March, splitting this four-and-a-half acre lot essentially in half, with the northern lot being used for the First United Bank facility. At this time, we're looking at the final plat for the entire space, the whole four-and-a-half acres, the two lots. It's quite a simple plat, really. The only, the only improvement is a sewer line extending along the east extent of the property, south all the way to the southern lot. So, with that being said, staff does recommend approval. I have three customary conditions listed here to go along with it.
Any questions of Justin?
Was it drainage on that south lot? You just leave it existing?
For now, yes. When we get a building permit...
We're going to dump it on the neighbor.
Justin, what's, what's on the very corner? Is that retention or is that...
Northwest corner.
Is that water retention there for the...
We look at the... Oh, yes, sir, that is the detention facility for Lot 1.
So, those are inlets?
They would be, yes, yes.
It holds it while it disperates.
Yeah, basically, it releases it at the, at the same rate as pre-development. I don't know specifically on the preliminary plat what the intention is. But I can assure you that the city engineers reviewed it and it... But I can assure you that the city engineers reviewed it, and it is compliant with city code.
Would entertain a motion to approve?
Summons.
Approved by Commissioner Rutherford. You second. Commissioner Gillum? Call of question. Motion carries, 7-0. Acknowledged monthly sales tax report, can city treasurers report?
Good evening.
Chance?
We, for the year ended June 30, 18, we found that overall sales taxes were down about half a percent. So we did an analysis of actual taxes received over the past 10 years, so we can determine nine periods of change, and we found that our three- and five-year averages, we have about 1.5% and 1.3% increases overall. I think this next year, we budgeted a 2.5% increase for our budgetary revenues, so right now, we're in the process of amending those budgets to be a little more conservative in our approach, based on our actual sales tax receipts for the past 10 years.
Okay, any questions of Chance?
Pretty neutral, actually. Sometimes neutral's okay, in this particular case. Any appreciable taxes coming from Amazon, or any of the others?
That is starting July 1st, so we really won't recognize those taxes until August, sales tax check from the tax commission. So the outlook is good.
It's going to be interesting just to see what it is, I think. Do we have any idea?
We, Justin and I talked about it, I think Oklahoma City anticipated about a 1% increase, so we're hoping for about the same.
1% is a lot better than nothing.
Does that go into the third party?
Yes, yeah, that includes everything, any internet sales tax, so Amazon, eBay, any online retailer.
I would just like to comment and compliment Chance on the analytical skills that he's brought to that position. I've been duly impressed in the short time that he's been here, so, attaboy. City manager.
This was easy to read, and I could buy your student.
I told him we were the lowest common denominator. He's used to working with me, so he knew that.
Good job, I appreciate it.
Justin?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. There's a report in your packet, I'll just highlight a few items. Of course, last week was the IFYR, hopefully you noticed all the trucks in town, and hopefully our sales tax reflects that next check as well, but we had a successful rodeo, weather was really well, and good in particular this year, which was, I think, appreciated by the participants especially. On June 27, Police Chief Mason Wilson and myself met with TAP Architecture at the First United Building that we've been discussing for use as a police department headquarters, a future headquarters, and we had a good preliminary discussion and evaluation of the building. They're going to actually prepare a written report that goes into the structural elements of the building, and mechanical elements, and a cost estimate of the remodel expenses as well, so you'll have a good idea going forward before you sign a final contract or authorize the approval of a final contract on that purchase. But the preliminary review's been really positive, looks to be a really good building, well-suited for our needs, so, of course, Proposition Number 4 did pass on June 26, and one of the projects in that package is that project. So we will bring more information to you, probably at your second August meeting on the police station specifically. Just a couple of quick other things, a comprehensive plan process is ongoing, August 6, or the week of August 6 is the next community workshop that's scheduled, so there'll be more information out on the website, and hopefully in the newspaper and other media shortly on that process. And as Chance mentioned, we are, of course, looking at the budget carefully, and with revenues coming in a little bit less than expected, we are being real conservative, pulling back a little bit on capital purchases and projects, and just going to take kind of an easy approach into this first quarter of fiscal year. We're also keeping a handful of positions open, just through attrition, and just want to make sure that we're in good solid financial footing. As Chance mentioned, we do have the internet sales tax that will start accruing in August 1, and then, of course, the project monies for those specific voter-approved items, or voter-approved buckets of funding that starts November 1. So there's hope on the horizon, but it's just going to be a little bit of a reduction this first quarter of the year, as we make sure that we're on firm footing, so we're being prudent and taking every step we can at this point.
Good for you. Questions, comments, Justin? Thank you, sir. Commissioners' comments?
Start with me. Well, thank you for having me, I mean, I appreciate it.
Good to have you.
Yeah, I appreciate the close to Shawnee, voting me into this position. I think it's going to be a lot of fun, I am really, really excited about the opportunity to do this. I think there's been a lot of great things done in Shawnee the last few years, and I think it's only going to get bigger and better from here, so I really look forward to the opportunity of working with all of you guys, and getting to know a few of you a little better than I do right now, but I think this will be loads of fun, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was certainly welcome, Mark and Ed here. I'll call Mark and Ed, I'll call them Commissioner next week, I guess. I was reading with the city manager the statement over in some wall, sort of a plaque-type thing, very interesting statement, and certainly something we all should strive for, it gives us an idea of what we are as a city, kind of what we like to be, and where we're going. I was pretty impressed, honestly, with the sales tax approval. Very difficult times to do that, for a lot of good reasons, and it showed me a number of things, I think. If you're looking at a city, for instance, and you are going to move there, you're going to work there, you're going to build a business, you want to see what they have, and we have a lot of nice things for VITUS and the city itself, we've provided so many things for the people, and continue to, but more than what you have is what you're going to have, because it shows the attitude of the people, and the confidence the people have in the city, to give us that opportunity to use our money to make this place a better place to live. So I just, I'm really impressed by the fact that we did get that through, and I know we're going to spend the money, when I'm gone, it's going to continue to be handled, I'm sure, very well, and produce the things that's going to make you all happy.
Well, that was a comment, I spoke to a group the other night, and I told them that Commissioner Rutherford and I were concerned when the votes were coming in, so we were very happy when the people that voted early, because they're the ones that actually passed the sales tax, so I do appreciate all the support, and especially those that voted early, and we'll try to diligently do the work as promised, and I thank Mr. Sehorn and to Ed and Bolt, that we appreciate y'all seeking the office, and it takes a lot of energy just to file, whether you have an opponent or not, so we do appreciate your interest in Shawnee, and your taking part in the commission and the activity, and for me personally, I've been around a few days, so, but anyhow, I think Shawnee's got a lot of things going for it, and right now, it's really moving forward, and I'm very proud to be part of the city, and hopefully can see some progress here in the next few years again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to thank the outgoing Commissioners, Boussang and Shaw, for the last couple of years that I've got to serve with you, it was a pleasure, I think we've done some good things, and happy, I want to welcome the new Commissioners, it's going to continue to go in a good way, I think, and I have this opportunity, and probably two more, to mention Cops and Kids. Cops and Kids is August the 25th at the Expo this year, at 1:00, that's a Saturday afternoon, we're moving to the Expo. That's all.
1:00?
1:00.
Okay.
I'm excited to be here, a little apprehensive to do it, you know, kind of got to talk in a little bit of doing it, but, you know, really, thanks, exciting times, I've lived here all my life, and you kind of watch what's gone on the last 50 years, and there's been more the last five or six years, and previous probably 25 years, just in growth, businesses coming in, so, you know, I really think it's going to be a different time, you know, over the next 10 years, we're going to see a dramatically different Shawnee, so hopefully, it'll be fun being part of it, and I appreciate, you know, y'all seeing me fit to be here.
I just want to say thanks to the citizens of Shawnee for passing our tax increase, and especially thankful to Justin and to the mayor for speaking to anybody that's listened over the last two or three months, and it shows that every vote counts, and welcome to Commissioner Bolt, and you, we appreciate everything, Mr. Sehorn, and so...
Okay. I, too, would like to echo the thanks to the exiting Commissioners and the welcome to the entering Commissioners, and whoever those 40 people that put us over the top.
36.
Yeah, 36, so we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. New business?
There is none, sir.
Okay, the Shawnee Airport Authority is adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Is there any new business?
No, sir, there is not.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.